Welcome, everyone. I called to order the Beaverton School Board work session for October 13th, 2021. I want to begin with a land acknowledgement. I would like to acknowledge that our district rests on the traditional land of the Tuolton Kalapuya. We thank the ancestors of the Kalapuya for being the original stewards and protectors of these lands. We are honored by the collective work of many indigenous nations, leaders and families. We demonstrate resilience, resistance, revitalization, healing and creativity. We'll do a roll call of board members. So Zone 1, Susan Greenberg.
Here.
Zone 2, Karen Perez.
Okay.
Zone 3, Eric Simpson.
Here.
Zone 4, Sunita Garg.
Here.
Zone 5, Ugana Inanayan.
I'm here.
Zone 5, Becky Timchuck.
Or 6, here.
Zone 6. Not rezoning yet, Becky.
Oh darn.
And Zone 7, Tom Colette, yes, I am here. So tonight, we are going to be working with Hank Harris for our superintendent search. This is one of the most important things that a board does, which is selecting our superintendent. And we are very excited to have Hank with us. We're going to be talking about how we can engage the community and get information as we build our superintendent profile. So those who are watching along at home, there's probably going to be some outreach following this meeting and our opportunity to give input into what we want from our next superintendent, which is incredibly important. But I don't want to waste any more of your time with my comments. We're here for Hank tonight. And Hank, let us know what we need to do to prepare to get another superintendent.
Thanks so much, Tom. Thanks so much, Board. Quite an honor to be with you. We, we consider this a, I mean, not only a great honor, but really our sacred responsibility to serve a school community. In this case, a district that I admired for so long and have had the opportunity to work on behalf of a few times over the last couple of decades. So thank you, thank you, Beaverton School Board for putting your trust in us on this very, very important journey. As Tom said, one of the most important things that you will do as a board, somewhat argued the most important thing that you do as a board is to select your leader. So thank you. We intend to, we realize we have a high bar and high expectations coming in and we plan to exceed your greatest expectations. So I would love to introduce my teammates and also if it would be okay, I'd love if the board members, because board members, you're meeting my team for the first time, maybe we could all do a little bit of an interrupt. That's okay. Why don't I start with Kathleen Roddenord?
Good evening. It's such a pleasure to be here and I see a few familiar faces. It's wonderful to, wonderful to see you all. I'll share with you that I have, I served for 33 years as an Oregon public educator. I retired in August after serving 18 years as superintendent of the Junction City School District. It has been so much fun to work with Hank over the past year or so. And I'm super excited about this opportunity to assist with the search for your superintendent. A little bit more about me, I have been very involved in our state professional organization, COSA, having served on their executive committee for several terms. In doing that, I found that I had a particular passion for legislative policy work and had the pleasure last year of getting to serve on a state task force along with a handful of other superintendents, some board members, representatives from communities of color, where we did work that resulted in the Every Student Belongs Initiative. Also did some work to help inform changes to the Reduction in Force statute to make sure that we found ways to honor racial, ethnic and linguistic diversity of licensed staff as districts were going through that difficult decision-making process about layoffs. So got away from just the strict adherence to considering seniority and really finding ways to, to, to value the diversity that some of our staff are bringing to our districts. And also, I'm continuing to serve. I seem to not really be able to get away from, from some of this work. I've enjoyed so much continuing to serve on a task force of female superintendents in Oregon. We've been working on issues with respect to gender equity in educational leadership. Also, in addition to working with Hank, I am a part of COSA's superintendent support team. This year, I am mentoring six first-year superintendents and four second-year superintendents. So I've yet to really figure out that whole work-life balance with retirement. But that's where I'm having a lot of fun with what I'm doing. So I'm gonna just keep doing it.
Kathleen, thanks so much. And now I'd love to introduce Joy Ross to you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and it's lovely to be here. As Hank said, I'm Joy Ross. I'm originally from the Bahamas. And I always put that out because I think how we show up and identify racially and ethnically is hugely important in the educational arena. This is year 34 for me in education. And as I'm telling you this, I'm getting goosebumps because I've had a wonderful experience that started off with the Chicago Public Schools running their immigrant and refugee newcomer center and then found my way to the suburbs and had the great fortune to work in secondary administration for 12 years. And then I got to open a high school. And I realized how fortunate an opportunity that is. And it was truly in that experience that I fell in love with adults. And I recognized that that was really the key to creating spaces for kids to thrive. If we could make sure that our adults could show up whole just as they are. And so that began my tenure in HR. And so this is year seven. And I had the good fortune of meeting Hank Harris two years ago when he was representing the Lake Washington School District as they searched for their first Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And I tell the story that I was not thrilled with the job application or the, the job description. And I talked to Hank and I said, the job that you're talking about, I would be interested in that. And so as I think about having the opportunity to join his team as a consultant, I'm honored. I know that he made a difference for me. And so I have great confidence that he will lead a team and really excel as he has already indicated in the search for your next superintendent. So excited to be here. So I'm currently the Assistant Superintendent at Lake Washington. I get the good fortune of serving as an adjunct professor for Loyola University in their doctoral program, leading diversity, equity and inclusion spaces. And I also support the principal licensure program for Regis University. So to Kathleen's point, yeah, there's, there's no rest for the weary, but that's okay, because this is very bucket filling. So very excited to be here and thank you for your trust.
Thank you. Thanks. That's my team. That's us. Board members, will you, I've met you all, but did you do a little intro and tell us who you are?
Tom, do you want us to go by zone order? What do you want us to do? You're muted, Tom.
I said, let's go in reverse order. We're always picking on poor Susan with Zone 1. So I'll, I'll start off. I'm Tom. I've been on the school board for four years now and very excited to serve our community. A couple of areas where I'm, I'm focused, there's, there's lots of things that we work on that are making sure that we have good facilities and seismically updated schools. I'm passionate about a well-rounded education for our kids and making sure that our students have deep arts experiences and deep language experiences. And I'm, I'm really excited to be here with this, this team. We have an amazing board this year and excited to be looking at who might be our next superintendent. So Becky.
Yep. Hello. My name is Becky Timchuck and I represent Zone 6 and starting the seventh year on the board and was, was a brand new board member with Eric when we got to choose Superintendent Grodding right off the right first year we were elected. So that was an experience to do that as a newly elected school board member and represent the, you know, the zone that I'm in represents the south end of the district where there's a lot of growth going on. And both of my kids were our graduates of the district and was very involved as a parent in the community, in the schools before getting elected to the school board, but really glad to be working with you folks.
I'm next. My name is Ugana and I've been on the board for a minute. Newly elected, representing Zone 5. And my passion is to create an environment where our students will thrive and have access to equitable educational experience in our district, irrespective of how they identify. And that is why I'm here on this board, just paraphrasing. And other than that, I'm just excited to be able to be a part of this work, a very important work to choose our next superintendent. And I really can't wait for us to get started. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Sunita Garg. I was born in Mumbai, India. But I've lived in Oregon for over 30 years now and I've been here for a minute, but this minute seems a very long minute already. But very excited to be here, very impactful work. Just loving the experience and being here, looking forward to selecting the new superintendent. And yeah, excited to get started. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Eric Simpson in Zone 3. I'm a product of the district. I went to Rock Creek Elementary, grew up in Rock Creek, went to Meadow Park and I graduated since the high school in 1990. My mom was a teacher in the Beaverton School District for 34 years in sciences. I've been coaching high school track since the high school since 98, so 23 and a half years of volunteerism there. And then the board positions my way to use my engineering and business and stuff and help influence the district I'm really passionate about, moved into the Sunset area so my kids could graduate from Sunset High School. And I have young ones at nine and seven. And they go to Sunset football games and are passionate about purple. So I want to get a great superintendent. So we have a great education system that continues. So, and I know Hank, you did it once, we'll do it again.
Hola, mi nombre es Karen. And I think it's like saying the alphabet backwards. It's hard to do our order in backwards because we keep going in the same direction. Had to think about that. I am, my, my areas of focus and passions around equity and inclusion for all of our students so that they can thrive and experience belonging in our schools. In that we are celebrating their identities, whether it's gender, race, their special ways of learning. And my other focus area is, and actually included in that is having really strong schools that provide strong access for multilingual learning for students who are multilingual and focusing on dual language and diversifying the workforce. I worked in Beaverton School District myself for over 18 years. Worked with Kathleen and Eugene in, for, for a bit when I was in the Eugene area and have seen her work. And I'm happy that she's here and I'll pass it on to Susan. Sorry, and I forgot to say I identify as a brown-skinned Latina, first-generation immigrant, and I'm multilingual myself.
Susan Greenberg, Zone 1. I've been on the board, I'm in my ninth year. So we have the people that have been here for a minute. And I guess that equates to at least an hour for me, so at least, if not more. But it's, you know, every year it's challenging and every year I'm proud of what we do as a school board. My focus has particularly focused on mental health for our kids, all kids. I'm concerned about, you know, access to support for our kids, especially our marginalized children. So that's been my focus. I would say that I would also echo Tom when he talks about looking, you know, education from the whole child. I'm all, also have supported that for multiple years. But I'm also very proud to be part of this process. I'm excited. And I think our school district and our school board is heading in a very exciting directing, direction.
Thank you, Board. Tom, do you want me to just jump into the work or do you want to facilitate?
Um, if you're not going to have us take Myers-Briggs at this point, I think, let's get to the work.
I'm not going to have you do that right now. Board, thank you. Let's, let's dive in. Just a couple little logistical pieces I just want to share with you. One is to my right, I have all my documents up. So if you've seen me looking over here, it's, I'm not playing video games. I've just got materials here. And secondly, I, a couple you might have heard early, I, I am a kind of not super fast at sharing documents. So when I share documents, there might very well be a 15 or 20 second pause. Just know that. So some people can just whip those documents into the share screen and it takes me a little bit longer. Without further ado, I'd like to open the, the planning meeting agenda. And I'm hoping you can see it right now. Okay, I see Tom nodding, so that must be yes. We're going to talk about, we've got about 13 or 14 things on our agenda. We're going to spend the largest amount of time on the very next agenda item. So if 20 minutes from now we're still on this agenda item, don't worry and think that we've got a five-hour meeting ahead of us. We don't. But what I'd like to do to start is to look at, to look at the timeline. And the timeline will really do two things. One, it will cement what the work is. I know we spoke a little bit about what the work is when you interviewed me a couple of weeks ago, but I really want to get into it and make sure I've answered your questions. And certainly we can tweak and tailor things if need be. Board members, you received the documents ahead of time or are you seeing them for the first time right now? I'm asking because there's actually two timelines. I just wanted to know if you had, can you just nod in the two timelines? Okay.
But it doesn't mean that I opened them up, to be honest.
Nope, there's two different versions of the timeline and.
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so I'm going to walk through, the two timelines are, one is a bit more expedited than the other. But the, the pieces on the timeline are the same. So what I'd like to do is walk through Addendum A1, which I will now attempt to open. And then, once we go through that, we'll make a decision, you'll make a decision whether that meets your needs or whether you want to look at something a little bit more expedited. We can talk about pros and cons. And that did not quite work, so let's try that again. Bear with me, please. Okay. Do you see Addendum A1? Excellent. Okay. So let's walk through this timeline. And I think I was alluding to that, that there's really two, two objectives here. One is to clarify or re-clarify what the body of work is, how things work together, what your roles are, what other people's roles are, where the community steps in. The other thing is there are some dates. Now, some of the dates are going to be specific to the board. And so it will be important that when we get to those and I'll identify them, that all seven board members say, yeah, I can be there that day. Because if one board member can't, then we'll need to find another day. And I didn't check your personal calendars before putting this together. So there may indeed be a day or two that we need to swap out due to individual schedules. The first thing that will happen after tonight's board meeting is we will begin the preparation for, I'm going to talk about these three next items together, the one-on-one board conversations and key stakeholder conversations, the focus group meetings and the online survey windows. And you'll notice they're all around the same period of time. We believe in a high level of community input, particularly at the front end of the superintendent search. And we think that's what you would want to, that reaching as many voices, as many stakeholders as possible to inform us about really two, there's two prongs to that. One is what is the state of the Beaverton School District right now? What are people's experiences? And the flip side of that is what are people's hopes and aspirations for the new superintendent? It's twofold. And we need to get our arms around both. What is happening? What is the state of the district right now? And that will look different to different stakeholders. And again, secondly, that other prong, what are people wanting the school board to focus in on? Of all the wonderful qualities that we could look for and want in a new leader, what are the ones that really rise to the top right now in the history of this district that are most important? So we'll do that through one-on-one. So going back to this timeline, we'd like to, we'd like to start with our, start that work by interviewing board members. And so we'd like to be able to interview you all on November 1st. It's not written in stone. If we need to interview one of you on the second or the day before, we can do that. But in general, we'd like to hold as many of those one-on-one conversations. These would be virtual. And they would be 45 minutes. So you, you would be downloading for us everything you think, everything you want, what's great about the district, what are the opportunities, what are the challenges? Is there any, and again, this is 45 minutes at some point during the day. So is there anybody that would be, and I'll need you to speak up because I can only see right now three board members are giving a time. Is there any board member that absolutely cannot commit to any time on November 1? Okay, great. It's one-on-one board conversations and key stakeholder conversations. So oftentimes that, what does that second part mean? Oftentimes, that's the current superintendent or maybe somebody else who just has got a lot of information that really would be good for us to have at the front end of our interviews. Then we're going to move very quickly into focus group meetings. Now, later in the agenda, we're going to talk about how to plan those and who's involved in those. But right now, I just want to give an overview of what, what the work looks like. The focus group meetings involve various stakeholders from around the district. Certainly, there are internal stakeholders such as teachers, principals, staff, and certainly there are external stakeholders, families and community members, parents, and then students sit right kind of on the, on the fence of that. And we want to reach many of them. So between November 2nd and November 8th, Kathleen and I will be involved in focus group meetings across the district. Those also will be virtual. And then we move into the online survey, which is, we now have a partnership. We did not have this last time I worked with you. We have a partnership with CEE. They are experts at data and analysis, climate surveys in particular for school districts. And they will be helping us manage, I guess we will be helping them, we'll be partnering with them to get that survey out. The easiest way to do it is online, but as I think we talked about when I met with you last time, not everybody does online easily or happily. And so we want to make sure we get the survey into as many hands as possible. Certainly not everybody can or is able to participate in the focus groups, but everybody can participate in an online survey. So that's what we call the community engagement aspect, particularly at the front end. We front load and we get as much involvement as possible. And Shelley, I'll be working with you to sort of check in and seeing how much, how much data we're getting with the surveys on kind of a daily or every two days to make sure that we're pushing out the information in all the appropriate ways. And prior to November 1st, I guess I should say, there's a lot of prep work for this to happen. So we'll talk about that too. Over those two weeks from November 1st, November 15th, we're getting, we're learning Beaverton inside out. And then we come back to you as board members. Now, this is a date that is not on your calendar. So this is the next date that I am wondering if we could schedule a, a special session for the board. This would be open session. I would love it to be November 29th. That would be my first choice. And if not, then I might recommend some other dates. But can we start with that question? Is it possible to have a special session on November 29th?
Hank, are you looking for during the day or in the evening or does it, could it be either?
Okay, it could be either. I believe Kathleen, we are both available throughout the day. Is that right, Kathleen?
I believe the evening would be.
That's correct.
I think the evening would be easier for board members. So, and, and board members speak up here if you feel otherwise, but maybe like a 5:30 PM meeting, something like that, or a 6:00 PM meeting.
I think that 6:00 PM would be ideal for me.
Let's plan on a 6:00 PM meeting then. I don't, how, do you know how long you're looking to go for, Hank?
I would block out two hours. It should not be longer than that and it might be less.
That's fine then. I think this is just what we're doing tonight.
Yeah. Okay, this is wonderful. I'm not hearing any board members saying, no, that won't work. Okay, excellent. So there are a couple of key things that will happen on the 29th. The first is that we will come to you with our synopsis, our analysis of what we learned from your community. I'll be there. John Stich from CE will also be there. John will provide the data that comes in from the survey, which is really interesting, the way that he's able to present that. It's really a needs assessment. And you'll see where, where the citizen rate kind of, well, the stakeholders, I should say, rank the district on a variety of different aspects in very, I think, useful modality to understand the nature of the district. And then we'll be sharing the anecdotal pieces that we're learning from focus groups. And that all culminates in a, in a single-page document, which we call the Next Superintendent Criteria. And again, I think we talked about this last time, but just to sort of paint this picture, we'll bring you a document and say, Board, this is what we think this community is telling you that they want you to focus on in your search. It's usually between nine and 13 bullet points of the very kind of top qualities that folks are looking for in their next leader. And then you'll discuss with each other whether this is the reflection, whether this is what you want, because you are the decision makers. So you're listening to the voice of the community, but then you as a collective are deciding, is this or is this not, or to what extent, that's probably a better way to say it. To what extent is this actually the criteria you're comfortable with? And usually boards do tweak it a little bit. Sometimes boards just accept it as is. There's always the option for the board to say, no, this isn't what we want. It all start all over again, Hank. That has never happened to me, but that would certainly be an option as well. At the end of that meeting, we want to have a document that is ready. Because it's a work session, you won't actually take action. But we want to get that document into clean shape so that at your next board meeting, you can just include that in the consent agenda and approve it. And this becomes the criteria that you're, that you're looking for. This is your marching orders to us of what we look for in the superintendent. We make this public so that candidates can self-select or ask questions about it. Let me pause. I see at least one hand up of Karen. And I don't know if others might also have questions at this time.
I'm wondering if you could get us that beforehand, because I'd love to just sit with it for a little bit and think instead of just seeing it the day on Monday at the evening.
Totally. 100%. You'll have that several days in advance. Any other questions?
I have one. This is just, I mean, I'm jumping ahead because we're talking the 29th, but I'm looking at the recruitment window. And then like if we're, I don't know when our school board meeting is in December. So that's my question. It's not on my calendar right now. So I assume you've looked at that in terms of like us voting on the criteria and then the recruitment window.
Yeah. November is early and our meeting in December is mid, both are mid-month.
So the reason I ask is wouldn't we be voting at our December meeting for the criteria? So that I just want to, you know, for recruitment, I just want to make sure that, you know, recruitment, we, we have the criteria and we're voting on it in our December meeting. I just want to make sure that the dates line.
I think I did look at, I can.
We do. It's December 13th. So if we voted on the 13th, then the window would open on the 15th. That makes, unless there's some rules.
Thanks, Karen.
Hank, are you looking for a formal vote of the board?
Sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off, Tom, but formal vote of.
Are you looking for a formal vote of the board? I mean, because we could do that both in a work session. We could also do it at the school board meeting. What's traditionally done? Or are.
So usually we do it in a work session. And we end that work session with kind of a sort of understanding of we are. Sometimes the board says, Hank, can you, can you do these two things or add this or somehow wordsmith this one sentence? And, you know, with seven board members and me in a certain amount of time, like, we don't always get it crystal clear by the end of that work session. But usually I have enough information from the collective that I have a sense of what you want. Right? So I don't want to waste your time by sitting there trying to wordsmith things. And so that's why I, having a little time between that work session and the board meeting is usually enough time for me to sort of turn something out that I think is going to meet, going to meet with your approval. Is that what you're asking, Tom? is usually enough time for me to sort of turn something out that I think is going to meet, going to meet with your approval. Is that what you're asking, Tom?
Yeah, I'm just trying to, are, are we voting on this at the November twenty-ninth meeting? And then you go forward, or do you need us to take it to the December school board meeting and vote on it? We can do either. Just let us.
Okay, so I'm, I'm good with either. Sometimes boards don't want to take votes in work sessions. Um, although this is a special session, so I don't, the rules are a little bit different. I'm really comfortable, especially if I need to do some work on it, rather than have you sit around kind of waiting for me to do a little bit of wordsmithing. I'm really comfortable if you just put it on your consent agenda for December thirteenth. I think that's probably easiest for you.
Okay. That's helpful.
Let me just write a note myself. I want to make sure I'm capturing everything. Okay, are there other questions on anything up to this point? And then we'll move forward to the next part of the agenda, the next part of the timeline. Is somebody, is there a?
Ugana has a question.
Okay.
So I was, I was wondering about the one, one-on-one broad conversations. How does that look? What is that going to look like? Are you gonna have a meeting with each and every one of us separately or uh, as a group?
Separately, separately. And I'm going to start with getting to know you a little bit um, and asking. All right, tell us, we're gonna start, this is how we're gonna start. We're gonna say, tell me, tell me what you want me to know. Tell me what you're thinking about. Tell me what you're hoping for. Um, tell me why you got into this work in the first place. So we'll start like that. Uh, and sometimes we'll, we'll get really sort of, the, it, some board members want to just sort of share. And that's really, really valuable information, just to download. And some board members want us to ask pointed questions like, what is the district really proud of? What are the challenges this new superintendent is going to face? So you, we're going to let you, whatever, how you, wherever you're most comfortable in terms of working with us and conversing. Um, sometimes it's just stream of consciousness, but it's, it's super highly valuable. And we get a lot from forty-five minutes and often we're kind of wishing we had a little bit more time. But that's, that's what it is. It's, it's uh, just, just your time by yourself.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, if there's no further questions, um, let's move down to the recruitment window. Um, no, I'm sorry, uh, just a little bit more on November twenty-ninth. Um, and in true to form as a draft document, you'll see that I've made a couple of scratch marks already. Uh, the other thing that we'll talk about in November twenty-ninth is the role of community stakeholders in the um, in the selection process. Boards usually want to have some other voices involved in helping them learn and think through who the finalists are. So we'll have a conversation and make some decisions on the twenty-ninth. The specifics of that conversation, I'm going to talk a little bit more about later in this agenda tonight around some of your choices. But so we're going to circle back and you'll know what I'm talking about later on in the agenda. But we do want to finalize, if we possibly can, on the twenty-ninth. What is the format? I guess that's a better way of saying it. What is the format of our final interviews? Um, particularly around community engagement and community stakeholders. The other thing that you see in there is that because the twenty-ninth is the last time I meet with you before we open the recruitment window. We need to have an idea of what the, the salary, uh, the compensation package for the new superintendent will be. So um, I'll leave that up to um, maybe Tom and Becky as the agenda makers. That can be, we can do that at the November twenty-ninth meeting, or if you'd rather do that at another board meeting prior to the twenty-ninth, that's fine. And if you want me to jump into that agenda, I can do that as well. You will not be, you will not be um, taking action. I'm not going to be asking for a board action on a salary range. I'm not looking for that. What I will be looking for is to hear each of you share aloud your comfort zones around the compensation package. And that gives me talking points so that when I am talking to candidates. Um, I don't, I, we're not like talking about a salary range because that would tie your hands in ways that I don't want you to. But I would, you know, I would want to be comfortable having heard each of you speak about salary. That I could sort of say something and, you know, a candidate would know whether they're in the range or out of the range or not interested or whatever. Um, so I'd like that conversation to happen no later than the twenty-ninth.
I think Susan had a question and Sunita.
No, um, Hank answered it while he was talking, so I took my hand down.
Oh, okay.
Thanks.
So as far as the salary is concerned, um, are you going to give us some um, comparison points as to the size of um, district, how much a superintendent is paid and like some, some information like that for us? Would you have that available for us?
I can certainly do that. I can certainly do that.
Okay, thank you.
And I actually have the same question as Sunita, and I'm wondering too, like a breakdown in how that compensation looks in a total package. So like how much of that traditionally goes towards like retirement, healthcare, pension, you know, all, all the different pieces so that we can kind of understand what a competitive package looks like?
Yeah.
Looking at just wages, I think gives you one sense. And then when you look at the full package, you get, you go a little deeper and you can.
Yeah, for sure. So I use salary and, and you're right to point that out. Salary and comp are not the same thing. As an HR guy, I, I know that well. Um, and you're right. So it's more than salary. So what we can do, I mean, and you, you probably know that, um, you may or may not know. So that information is sometimes available and aggregated, and oftentimes it's not. So for instance, for Oregon, we can get that information pretty easily. That is of some value to you, but that's probably not enough for you to have. And then when we're trying to compare Beaverton to districts and other states, uh, it can get pretty labor intensive. Because sometimes we have to like subpoena, subpoena, that's not the right word. We need to uh, have a, have a public request for contracts and that can get a little bit intense. So we will, we will get you as much as we can, recognizing we probably won't have everything that you would want in a full comprehensive salary study. But we'd get as much, as much as we can for you.
Thank you. Becky?
Um, I would, I spent about a half an hour um, doing some of that work today. And you can find, I mean, I, I went with all the top districts, everything around us. You can get a base salary. It is a lot harder to get things like retention, how many pick up the pirs, um, moving per diem, all of that sort of thing. But all of the top districts, you can just Google it and it will, it will, it will, you know, bring up the base, the base salary. And then I also did it for the state of Washington, just as a, as a comparison. So that, that information is all pretty easy to find.
Thanks, Becky. So you'll share some of those materials with me, Becky?
Sure, no problem. I started a word, a spreadsheet, so.
Awesome, awesome. Okay, so we do the recruitment window, which uh, from a board perspective is kind of a quiet time. Um, from a recruitment perspective, we're pretty busy involved in getting the board out there, talking to would-be candidates, et cetera, et cetera. We talked a little bit about this last time, what that looks like. We'll close the, we'd like, in, in this, uh, in this timeline, we'd like to close it on January twenty-sixth. That's a, that's a, a nice rich amount of, uh, that's a nice window. I mean, it's, it's six weeks or so. Uh, winter break is in the middle, but winter break is sometimes actually a very good time for folks to get engaged in, in searches. Uh, this, between January twenty-sixth and January thirty-first, uh, our team, so myself, Joy and Kathleen, will be uh, reviewing applications. And figuring out who are the folks that we think rise to the top as um, when we compare against your ideal profile. And we will select a, a number of candidates for preliminary interviews, which will start on January thirty-first. Now, right around when um, so on this timeline, sorry, so on this timeline, those interviews would be, let's say, from January thirty-first to February second. These are preliminary interviews. These are virtual with just the consulting team. By February second, and maybe even a little bit sooner, you will get a confidential link mailed to you where you will be able to see all, all applications. You'll also be able to see the additional documentate, documents associated with sort of the top candidate. So I think we, anyway, I'm going to stop saying I think we talked about this because I'm just going to say it anyway, right? So, so if we, uh, if there are thirty-five applications for the Beaverton superintendency, we might, we might select fourteen that we think really uh, at least meet the criteria, but also on some level wow us, because we want you to be wowed, school board. And we expect Beaverton superintendent search should bring in some really top-door talent. So you'll see all thirty-five applications, but you'll also see for the fourteen that we interview, you're going to see transcripts of um, of the interviews, you're going to see reference calls, you're going to get like additional data that's going to continue to flow in on February second, February third, February fourth, and so. And so what you'll need to do is, this is your own private time. This is not, no one's going to calendar this for you. Between February second and February seventh, you will be um, you'll be reading applications. And I would try, I mean, people read at different speeds and people read, some people are going to read every single word of every single application. Some people are going to do less than that, but I might block out up to ten hours. Because, you know, life gets really busy. And if you wait till February second, you might find that you don't really have any time left. So I would ask that you block out about ten hours of your own personal time. Excuse me, between February second and February seventh. I believe there is already a board meeting scheduled. Can someone confirm that for me on February seventh?
Checking.
Yep, it's there.
Okay, wonderful. So, sorry, I talked over somebody just now.
It's a work session though, Hank. It's not a, it's not a board meeting proper.
This is, this is actually an executive session. So this is just the board in closed session. Um, where you will be making decisions around whom you want to interview.
Just know that the work sessions can be like five, six-hour sessions.
Okay.
But we may want to start with your executive session, because it can be a very long day when we do a work session.
Do you have a start time for that February seventh meeting?
It starts at three PM.
Okay. And so you'd like to do it before?
Well, you know, I would throw this out if board members have preference. The other option might be to have it on a, on a separate day other than February seventh, so that it's not part of that longer meeting and doesn't extend it. And allows us to give full consideration to just the subject of the superintendent search.
I would, I would rather have it on a second day, just, just for that reason, especially because um, we all have a lot, have jobs that, you know, kind of take time. And then, so you're working, it, I, I just want to make sure I have the bandwidth mentally for it.
Maybe another evening in the week, Hank, like another six PM?
I think that's, I think that's fine. The only thing that we, yes, that's totally fine. I'd say earlier is better than later, just so that we have time to set up the interviews that are forthcoming. But I am recommending, unless the board tells me otherwise, that this first round of interviews would also be virtual. And therefore, we're not trying to get people airplane tickets, you know, with forty-eight hour notice. So assuming that's the right, I'd say is, yes, any of those days would work and earlier better than later. Do you want to?
If you send me a couple of different days, then I can work with Diana to figure out which one we can put the session on.
And Tom, I don't want to be the deciding factor. I mean, I, I, I mean, other people might have, have other opinions on that.
Does anybody, uh, how do others feel? Uh, would you?
I think you can get few, for my, for me, get few dates and then we can decide later. Not today, not right now.
Okay.
And Susan, you're not alone. I agree with you. I actually think this is such an important subject. I want to make sure that I'm fresh. And that I have my full attention on it and, and I'm not thinking about the rest of the board meeting, or I've had that board meeting behind me.
Okay, so I'm going to send out some dates. And connected to that is this next, uh, this next part, which is also closed session, or I, I guess I used executive and closed interchangeably. But your, your interview day, first round, your board semifinalist interviews, first round and closed session is a very long day. And it's a lot of fun, and it's very long, and it's from morning till evening. So do you feel like you are, you as a board collectively could choose among those three days right now? Or do you also need time to think about that?
Let's maybe give us some time to do like a doodle poll or something like that and, and give everybody the opportunity to go through their calendars and think ahead. And it's, that live right now.
Perfect.
What week are we talking about? Sorry?
So the, these would be, and remember, we're only looking at one of the two timelines. So there's a chance you might go with another timeline altogether. Um, February twelfth, February fourteenth, which is Valentine's Day. So for some of you that may or may not be okay, uh, February fifteenth. Those are the, the three options I thought. And I could do a Sunday too, but oftentimes people don't like to do that on Sundays. So the twelfth, fourteenth, or fifteenth.
I think what I, we can do is we can send a, if at the end of the meeting tonight, Hank, you send me all the dates that are in question and the ranges. Then um, I'll work with Diana and we'll, we'll poll the board and figure out what the best dates are.
Okay, that sounds great. Uh, so I'm assuming that's how it'll be for the next. Also, in terms of.
Send those dates, if you can put down the number of hours that you might need us for, you know, like a full-day session or two or three hours, or that would be helpful.
Perfect, I can do that.
Thanks.
Okay. Uh. Okay, so the interviews happen. Let's just for argument, say it's Tuesday, February fifteenth. And what that day is, is you're interviewing somewhere, maybe as few as four and as many as seven. That's really kind of the range I would see. Folks are coming in, virtually coming in, I should say. You're spending about an hour, hour and ten minutes with each candidate. And at the end of that long day, you're deciding whom you want to get to know better and invite back for a finalist interview. And finalist interviews would be, so this might also be something that you need to sort of think about. But finalist interviews tend to be one candidate per evening over the course of multiple days. So let's say we started with those thirty-five applications. Let's say fourteen of them had preliminary interviews with my team. And let's say you interviewed seven of those on February fifteenth, for instance. And now you've whittled it down to probably two or three. You can do one, you can do four, four is really hard to do. Because there's a lot that goes into this. Most of the time, we're looking at two or three finalists, and three is a really good number. And so if, let's say it was three, then you might have a Monday evening with candidate one, a Tuesday evening with candidate two, a Wednesday evening with candidate three. And then Thursday morning or Friday morning, you are coming together as a board to decide, have you landed on your candidate? So we need to find a week, and in this, in this schedule. I wonder, Tom, is it okay if, if we just look for, for, to see if that's a week that any board members are like out of town or completely unavailable?
Sure. I mean, what I'd like to do, Hank, is once we decide between the two, send everybody out.
Yep.
I think we're going to get better consideration if we all have a chance to look at it and.
Okay, okay.
Some of us have flexible work schedules, so we can make things work, but we just have to know ahead of time and.
That makes sense. Got it. No, you're right. Okay, so if we, for argument's sake, we do those interviews, February twenty-eighth, twenty-ninth, thirtieth? Is there a thirtieth? There's no thirtieth in February. You would meet at the end of that week, March third or March fourth in the morning. And you would decide if you've landed on a candidate, and oftentimes you have. And sometimes you haven't, and you need to do some additional whatever, further interviews or further research or further studying. Um, and those last three pieces are just kind of the end game. You've, you've, once you've settled on a candidate. You might, you might want to do a site visit. Uh, if the candidate has not yet come to Beaverton, because we've all been virtual throughout this process, then you might want that candidate to show up in person. Just to make sure everybody's kind of what they think they are. Um, and this would wrap up in mid-March. And the thing that you're not, you don't see in the timeline actually, uh, is that there's also um, background checks that are going to be, uh, that's further down on the agenda. We'll talk about where the background checks fall in. So this is, this is the body of work um, of the superintendent search.
Hank, what does a site visit consist of? Is it usually like board members flying out to the other district and going and doing school visits with the superintendent? Talking to people that they've worked with, talking to other board members?
It's, it's, it's historically been that, and they take on uh, some different, different variations depending on a few things. But it's kind of what you just described. Sometimes a, a board member is, sometimes in a fully confidential search, where we have not publicly announced the candidate. Sometimes those site visits are actually, we try to make a confidential site visit, which is tricky but doable. Uh, sometimes in the virtual world now, we've had virtual site visits where you're actually not flying out, but you're still having some of those same interactions you would if you were sitting in a staff room of the school district office in Pennsylvania. It's, it's pretty much how you've just described it, Tom.
Becky, I think you had a question. Sorry, I might have jumped you in line.
No, one, I did the site visit when we hired Dawn and went out and spent the day at David Douglas School District and visited an elementary and middle school, high schools, spent time with the cabinet, spent time with their board members. Um, you know, it was a full day, you know, and it, it wasn't getting on a plane. It was getting on I-84 and going out to David Douglas. Um, but the other thing that I, I was going to bring up, um, and Eric and Susan reminded, I, I remember, and I didn't see it on your timeline. The board had to come together for considerable. The board had to come together for a considerable amount of time on the compensation package. So it was well after we had made the offer. But there were some back and forth thing and the board had to come together in executive sessions for the compensation package. And that took some time before then actual, there was an announcement made. So I see, you know, vote announcement, but I remember the board had to come together for a couple of executive sessions.
Yeah, I remember the same thing. Yeah.
So actually there's, there's, the law is a bit different, I think now, it certainly is different than that. So you now actually can't discuss compensation in executive session.
Okay.
So, um, yeah.
So what it, but, but it, as I recall, this, the, the candidate goes out and gets a lawyer and comes up with some figures and some language. And so you're saying that language we have to.
Yeah, here's how it, here has, how it now works. So you've settled on a candidate. And you settled, you, you've settled on a candidate and maybe you haven't quite appointed or made a public announcement yet. But, and so in Oregon language, what we would say is you've narrowed it down to one candidate. There's still a candidate. And at that point, uh, I give that person a call and I say, and sometimes it's the board chair at this point. Uh, let's say Tom gives this person a call and say, hey, you're our person. We're really interested. You're the only one, you're the only candidate left at this point. Let's, let's discuss, uh, let's discuss what our contract could look like. And the board, sorry, I, I, I skipped a step. Prior to that, the board has given authorization to, uh, usually there's two folks. So oftentimes it's the chair and the board chair to enter negotiations, enter into negotiations with, um, with a candidate. And because we've already had this conversation earlier, where, where board members have uttered aloud their thinking around compensation. What Tom and Becky, if it's, if you are the two, will need to do is when you enter negotiations, you'll need to be mindful of what your colleagues have said. Because you're going to want to get this contract passed by the board. So it doesn't actually happen in executive session. It happens in the group of two because you're not a quorum. Or it can happen in open session, but folks typically don't want to discuss the compensation of a certain candidate in open session prior to entering negotiations with that candidate. So it's a little bit different than what we might have experienced last time.
Okay, so what happens Hank, if we make that offer? And, you know, maybe, maybe there, maybe there are candidate in several districts. Or maybe they, they don't like our compensation and we're playing a little bit of hardball here or whatever. Is, is it still back and forth thing? Cause I remember you folks, you folks paid mediator for us a little bit here. Because we were dealing with the attorney of, of that person. So, so is, is that part still the same?
Yeah, it's always, it's always a little bit anxiety provoking and you're asking the right questions because people will get nervous, right? You'll have landed on your candidate and then you're like, all right, how do we land this and bring this home? And that's why you have, you know, a team of consultants to help make that happen. So folks usually worry that something will go awry. Pretty much, I, I, I mean, I'm not going to say it never goes awry, but it usually doesn't go awry because we've done our homework ahead of time. And the board and the candidate knows kind of in general what to expect and you know what your board is okay with. So there might be some back and forth and I can certainly help navigate that, but I wouldn't expect you to lose a candidate over that. Not, not in my search.
So anyway, so, so we, you don't think we need to build in any of that, these components in the timeline?
No, I think the, the important thing is that there's a conversation about comp in open session prior to the opening of the recruitment window.
Basically Hank, if I'm understanding you, the board kind of outlines a somewhat the authority. And then at the end, the board chair and the vice chair go in and they negotiate within that authority with the candidate to try and come up with a compensation package that's agreeable to both sides. Okay. Gotcha.
Yeah, and it, it does work. In the end, it does work.
Yeah. End of negotiations.
Yeah. Okay, so, um, I'm going to, uh, so, so you'll notice that this timeline, which is, is, this is a mid-March. This is early to mid-March is when you will, um, kind of land your superintendent. Uh, and so that was the initial timeline that I, I developed thinking about what your needs are. And I'm really comfortable with this. Um, so why did I also throw out the next document that I'm going to open, which we're not going to go step by step because it's the same thing you just saw, just with uh, more condensed, um, times is that I, I am hearing that folks, and I don't mean specifically in Beaverton. I just, you know, there's a lot of superintendent search openings this year. There's, um, probably more than, than we've seen in a while, it seems like. And so I'm really comfortable with this timeline, but if there's a sense of the board wants to go faster, I do have one that I, that I sent to you. In fact, I, I won't open it unless you want me to, um, that ends in, in mid-February. Mid to late February. Is that something you want to look at?
Is anybody interested in exploring an expedited version of what you just saw? I, I mean, I, I personally, when I'm looking at that, I'm like, that, that's a lot of work. It seems like the spacing's right. Making sure we have enough time for our community, making sure that we have enough time for the posting. Susan?
Well, the only caveat I have, unless like we see other school districts out there that we're going to be competitive with our school district in, in our superintendent search. Like there's another relatively large school district that's looking for superintendent the same time we are. And so we're competing with some other school district. That's the only reason I would say, oh, maybe we should consider it. Otherwise I like the first option.
Hank, do we, is, is there that super competitive, you know, in terms of timeline, if we got there first, we'd be able to get better candidates?
I think, so, I mean, I can't be clairvoyant to say who, exactly who's on the schedule. Here's what I do now. Uh, in the Pacific Northwest, the two somewhat equivalent, and these are very different communities. But in terms of size, they're not so far apart from Beaverton are Eugene and Seattle. Eugene has not picked their search consultant yet. Seattle, I don't think has even put out an RFP yet. So I don't think there's any chance those two districts are going to get ahead of you. I think making your decision by March, there will be a small number of districts that are right in the same time. Like nationally, there will be a small number of districts that are as expedited as you. I don't think you're going to see too many folks get hired prior to you. So I still think you are pretty much on the front end. I can't say you're going to be the first to announce. Cause you probably won't be, but you're going to be in, in that kind of first phase. And I don't see Northwest districts competing with you and getting in, I mean, you know, districts that would be competitive with Beaverton.
Becky, you got your hand up?
The only thing I would say is the unknown wild card and, and you know, I just wouldn't be shocked at all if Portland or Salem by the first of the year, one of those two also did not announce or retire. I mean, I wouldn't be shocked. I'm not saying that, but I wouldn't be shocked by either one of those.
It seems like we would be on a faster path though than either.
We, we would, but just as far as Hank saying the competitive, whereas Eugene took the route that they put in an interim and they're just now starting. The Eugene, but there's a, there's a whole bunch of other school districts that have, that are, but they're much, 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 much smaller.
Hank, how, just, you know, this is kind of a subset of a larger question. How competitive is the environment right now? When we're looking at like the, the pool of people who could become a Beaverton superintendent district. And I know part of our work is to figure out what the characteristics that person are. So I'm sort of asking a question in a vacuum. But, but how competitive is the market right now?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a really great question because it's such a weird world right now, right? So I think there are going to be a lot of superintendencies open. Some of those superintendencies are going to be open because I'm going to be as diplomatic as I can, they're not necessarily really attractive places. And so either their superintendent has said, see ya, or they've said to their superintendent, see ya. But either way, those are not always, you know, those folks, those boards might have a, a challenging time to find great talent to walk in the door. And so what, what I think is folks of, smart folks of high talent are going to have, um, choices of a number of districts. That's what I think. I think, but, um, you know, they're going to be looking for really strong, solid, well-supported districts with strong and harmonious school boards. And I think that's where you have, I mean, you know, and you live, you know, you, you, you're geographically located in an amazing spot. So, so it might be competitive, but you're a very, very desirable opportunity.
And, and they haven't heard us sing together yet. We're getting close. We've been practicing behind the scenes.
I haven't either. I'm, I'm excited by that. Um, I want to just maybe, I haven't, I've done most of the talking for the team. So Kathleen Joy, do you have anything to add on to that, that question?
I would just echo what you said Hank. I think that, yes, there'll be a great number of vacancies for superintendents that come up over the next few months for a variety of reasons. But I, uh, I also know that Beaverton is a district that is going to be coveted. And I think it will be competitive. I think you'll get some amazing applicants and people that apply, uh, to Beaverton. That wouldn't necessarily apply to those other, those other, um, vacancies. So.
Okay, so I think my takeaways are, um, I'm going to get a, maybe just an email if that's okay to you, Tom. The dates that sort of need to be figured out by the board. And then you can get back to me and maybe we can approve, uh, a, I, I would like the timeline to be approved. So maybe that could also be in your upcoming consent agenda. Whenever that is.
Yeah, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and board members look for an email that'll probably have some decision pieces. I don't know if we'll do a doodle poll or what, but we'll try and figure something with, to be able to understand what everybody's availability looks like.
Okay, great. And it goes without saying, I know, um, I know I'm talking to a really capable board, but I just goes without saying like, please don't plan your family vacation after that timeline comes out. And there's a great discount on flights to Hawaii because we will have to change the timeline to make sure that you're able to participate.
We never go to Hawaii Hank, we never go to Hawaii on this board. Right Becky? I'm going to January, so it's always.
Yeah, yeah, it's Eric we worry about.
We got the advantage of Zoom now, so.
That is true, that is true. Okay, I'm going to try to pull up the planning meeting agenda again. I think I did. Hopefully you can see the planning agenda for tonight's meeting. And let's walk through the next, or about halfway through our, our agenda tonight. And I think we are doing fine in terms of time. So communication norms is primarily, uh, there's two things that I think about with communication norms. One is, starting tonight, you have a search consulting team managing your superintendent search. So therefore you are off the hook. And you're asked to be off the hook with respect to, um, taking phone calls from anybody that might want to call you up and plead their case. Cause they think they'd be the next great superintendent of Beaverton and they want to talk to you. And if they've already done that, maybe they have, maybe they haven't. But starting right now, I don't want you to have those conversations. I certainly don't want you to go out for coffee with anybody, but I really don't want you to even be chit chatting on the phone with them. Even though you might know them. So what I would like to ask you to do is if somebody reaches out to you, to please just refer them to, to, to any one of us, uh, Joy, Kathleen, myself. If somebody who's not a candidate, but let's say a board member, call a board, whatever, a friend, somebody you know says, you should really look at this person, this person would be great for Beaverton. If you would just forward me their name, like that's our work and it keeps, it keeps the process fair. And one of integrity by not having you have one offs with candidates, uh, in the process. Uh, I, I asked the same thing of the superintendent, although superintendent's not an elected. His role is so weighty and people know him. So, um, as I do in any search and I called Dawn today and, you know, he was not surprised that I asked him this. But, um, that, those calls that he will surely get. He can say, hey, good to hear from you. Call, he cares, call Kathleen, call Joy. So, um, I can only see at this moment two or three, but if you would just nod that you're okay with that norm. I appreciate that. We appreciate that.
Just saying Hank, we're not having the OSBA conference anymore in November. That's usually where a lot of that horse train goes on.
Right, right? Yeah, yeah, yeah. Are they doing it virtually or is it totally?
No, not at all.
Oh my goodness. Okay. Okay, that makes our job a little easier, I guess, right? The pressure's off a little bit. The, the other part of the communication norm is in terms of communicating with us. So typically we will, and in this case, David Williams has been assigned as kind of our, our staff liaison, which, uh, which is great. And oftentimes I will, the board chair, and so I'm, I'm asking if this is somebody other than Tom. But usually it's somebody sitting in the board chair or a one board member is kind of the board liaison person to us. Really to just manage logistical pieces of the search. So, um, so I guess I'm asking, would that be Tom or Tom, do you want to designate somebody else to play that role?
I think I can handle that.
Okay. Okay, excellent. And the last part of that is that doesn't mean that we will never talk to the other board members. So, um, oftentimes a board member might reach out to us for just like a, like a minor clarification piece. Like you're looking at an application and you don't know what an acronym is, or you're struggling to get into it or whatever. You are actually allowed to send us an email if you want. We will. Oh, and the other reason, sometimes you just want to let us know something. Now you all are experienced, even if you've only been on the board for a minute, you're experienced, you know about the rules around public meetings. So here's how, here's how it'll work. If you want to just tell us something that you want us to know, you can send us an email. We will read it. We will not respond, but I promise we'll read it. If you have some question like what is this acronym? And you send me an email, what's an acronym? I will reply all, to all board members, this is what the acronym is. Okay? We don't want anything to become a public meeting. So if anything feels like it needs to go back and forth more than once to us, it's probably better to hold that in open session because we don't want to be in conversations with the board. As you all know, um, we can't really do that. So again, if you want to communicate something to us and just make sure we know it, you can send us an email. We will read it and not respond. If you have a very kind of typically a minor sort of question, I'm going to respond or respond to everybody. Okay, that sound good? Okay. The next part is staff support. So we will need, um, staff to assist us at various parts of the search. And usually we have three people play a role. This first one is logistics and communication flow and it, it sounds like that's Dave Williams' role. So I think he is that person. The second thing that we need for staff support is focus groups. So, um, so we're going to talk about the, let me hold off on that. I'm actually going to move 4B under 5. 4B becomes 5B. Let's talk about that in a moment. 4C, I think, is Shelley. Uh, we need somebody, uh, to build a presence on the website that talks about the superintendent search. You, I, I think that's Shelley, right? Doesn't that make sense?
It is, we can do that.
Okay, so the website and, and when we have the community survey, Shelley and her team would be getting the word out to make sure people are taking the survey. When you have a selected candidate and there's a press release, that would be fall into Shelley's domain. So moving to five is the planning for interviews and focus groups. It really should just read planning for focus groups because the interviews are with you board members and we can manage that pretty easily. But the planning for focus groups, we're not going to decide tonight in this short amount of time, who are all the focus groups. But I want to just give sort of like a 20,000 foot description of it. So I want to open up another document, which is addendum B. Bear with me. Can you see this document pretty well? Thank you, board. So we will, our, our contract I believe reads for 25 focus groups. And if that's not enough, we can certainly add to it. And in this top group, these are groups that we highly recommend that we meet with. You can just scan through them real quickly. They probably would be who you would think we would want to talk to. At the highest levels of the organization, we like to meet in very small groups or even one-on-ones with folks like your deputy superintendents. At the highest levels of the organization, we like to meet in very small groups or even one on ones with folks like your deputy superintendents. And then so in this first group, A to M, these are the groups that we really think should be included. It's ultimately your choice who we talk to. This is who we would recommend. In the second, um, group is, every, every district has their own sort of flavor of folks who are influential and involved and active. And so these are some of the other groups that you might, uh, you might want us to talk to. In order to actually do the logistics of building the focus groups, figuring that out and building a schedule, uh, we need a combination. This is that five B that was four B before we need, uh, and oftentimes it's the executive assistant to the superintendent who plays a coordination role in terms of setting up, building a schedule and sending out links to folks. Or it might be Dave. I'm not exactly sure who would be better suited, whether it's Diana or Dave, but it's probably one of them. Or maybe a combo of them. So, um. And Diana and Dave may be, I don't know, if you want to let me know who that is, or do you want to talk about that yourselves, or? Who would that person or persons be?
Yeah, we, we can, we can probably chat between the two of us. We, we, we shell through the doors, so we'll figure it out.
Okay. And, and the composition, so the, the second piece is the composition, who are the focus groups? And so what I would like to recommend is that the board, uh, select either one or two board members to, um, to set up a meeting within the next, if not this week, then early next week. So it sounds like the meeting should be one or two board members, um, David and/or Diana, uh, and me or Kathleen. But we'll work around your schedule, uh, to figure out who are the groups. Because that's probably, that takes a little while to figure out who do you want to invite? Uh, especially knowing you've got 25 or maybe more, depending on what you want to do. So. So I'm going to look to you, Tom. Do you want to appoint one or two board members to play that role?
Yeah, do, do we need to do that right now, or is this the right forum?
I think this is the right forum, um, because we'd want to have a schedule, like after this meeting, I would want to, somebody to work on getting a schedule for this next meeting to happen.
Okay, who is interested with just like a show of hands? So I see Sunita. Eric is interested. Karen is interested. Okay, does it have to be one or two people?
Yeah, let me, let me, I, I, let me, let me throw another, I probably should have said this before I started to ask for a show of hands. All board members are probably going to have a vested interest in, in who these groups are. So whoever is the one or two people, uh, that are going to sort of do the nitty gritty, I still want the other board members to in individually shoot an email to whoever is the coordinating team to say, hey, make sure you include this group. Or I think this group really needs a voice. So all board members should be able to inform the process. But it's really hard to have, first of all, you can't have a quorum. So it's, you could have three, I guess, if you want. That's, it seems like a lot of cooks in the kitchen. As long as it's not a quorum of board members.
If I'm understanding their function, Hank, it sounds like what they're really doing is compiling input from everybody and putting it together. So it's not, they're certainly like choosing between things, but they're just compiling that information. So those two people are maybe fulfilling more of a logistical function.
I would say so, but there might be, you know, some decisions that have to be made too. You know, if you get 40 groups that are recommended, you gotta. Yes, it's largely what you said, but there might need to be some selections made.
Okay. So, um, who is interested? So is it, uh, we have a trend, Sunita and Eric, you guys are the three that are interested. We probably just need two people.
I think three of us can work together. That's, it, it's not a quorum or anything, so we should be okay with three.
All right.
You think? Um, I mean, I'm okay with three. What about Karen and Eric? What do you feel? We can work well together.
Um, you know, you can start with the three and probably participation is going to be dictated by calendar because this is going to have to happen pretty quickly. Um, and so we'll, we'll find a date and then it'll be whether or not people can join, right?
Well, Hank, tell us exactly what is it that you're looking for from this group of people? Are we selecting your groups or are we bringing them together, gathering the information? What are we doing exactly?
Sure. This is what I'd like to propose. Tonight or tomorrow, I would like all board members to send an email to Dave Williams, Dave on volunteering you. I would like you to send an email to Dave Williams of who you think should be involved in the focus groups. Okay, now that doesn't mean you have to give a list of 20 because we're obviously going to talk to your current superintendent. We're going to talk to principals. We're going to talk to students. So I, but I want you each, each individual board member to think about who would you, is there any group or individual that you feel is really important to inform the process? And I want you to send that email to Dave. Okay, to your question, Sunita, then let's say it's the three of you and Dave and Diana and me. And I'm only there to help things move forward. I don't, I don't have a vested interest on who's the groups. You're going to look at this document that I've just given you and you're going to also read the emails that came in from the seven board members. And you're going to figure out, okay, how do we, how do we build the groups? And if we're trying to stick to 25, what are these, who are these 25 groups? That's what your job is going to be. You're, you, this coordination group, you're not, you're not scheduling that. After you decide who the 25 groups are, then Dave and Diana are going to actually start to build the schedule. You don't have to worry about this group's meeting at four o'clock, this group's meeting at three o'clock, board members. That's not your responsibility. Your responsibility is to figure out what are the 25 groups? Did that answer your questions, Sunita?
How many groups do you have here, you said? So we will be picking from these groups or we might be adding some?
So I, I want to pause here because Hank, with your positing only 25 groups, community input's really important to us. And so I think having more than 25 is going to be okay.
Sure.
That I think, making sure that we have a good process where everybody's input is compiled. And if there are duplicative things, right, where we have board members saying the same thing and essentially different words, right? That's going to be important, but I want to make sure that this group knows that they're compiling and putting together a larger group. Not necessarily making choices between what different board members want.
That's totally fine. So what I hear you saying, Tom, is that 20, we don't need to stop at 25. And so if there's a need to do 28 or 30 or 35, that the board's comfortable with that, that.
Sure. Yeah. And then with that in mind, I think having three people would work really well. And so I think, uh, so I saw, I don't know which order here, but I saw Becky, Karen, Susan, you all had your hand up. And then Sunita, before we, I want to make sure that, that you finished your comments if you have more.
No, I, I got my questions answered. Thank you, Hank.
Yeah, you bet.
So, well, let's go, Becky, Karen, Susan.
Just my whole thing is I think we were kind of getting, um, stuck in the fact that we had to have each individual group with their own evening of just speaking out. And we're not going to be able to build a model like that because to find a date where a certain group can meet and there, there's other ways besides physically getting together and having like a town hall. Or we could have different groups at the same town hall, listening sessions, whatever we call them, you know? Or we could do it through a survey. I mean, there's other, there's ways besides us actually coordinating a separate group, just having their own evening, because we also know it's really hard for some groups to come to us. We may have to go to existing meetings that they already have, like PTO meetings or our student advisory committee that meets or, or, or whatever. So I think we were, I, I think we were kind of maybe thinking we had to organize all of these in their own sort of listening session.
Karen?
Um, I see that it says 30 minute meetings. How many people are you thinking are going to be in that meeting that you can actually listen to in 30 minutes?
Yeah, so you'll notice that, uh, we, we do, we do limit it, uh, as best we can. And so usually we cap the number at 12. So in the old days, it used to be just a quick little history. We used to try, when, when we weren't in the virtual world, we would, you know, set up the cafeteria and do an all call and everybody could come. And a couple of problems with that. One, usually the, most people didn't come. So we'd have this giant auditorium with a handful of people. And secondly, it's, it's not, what, what I've learned in the virtual world is it is much richer to have a smaller group of folks who can see each other with their names there. It's easier for folks to attend a virtual meeting typically than running across to the high school across town at seven o'clock on an evening. So we found it to be much more, uh, that the input is just richer to do it this way. And as Becky said, it's not the only way to inform the process. It's a way. But to your question, we really want to cap it at 12. We can go more than 12, but once you go more than 12 in a 30 minute block, it starts to get hard to allow everybody the airtime that they have showed up to, you know? We want them to be engaging with each other as well as with ourselves. So 12 is really the largest number I, I, I would want.
Yeah, no, that was my first question. That makes, yeah, 12 is a lot still to listen to in 30 minutes. My second thing was for David, um, like Ugana, I think Eric and I all work. So when you were saying, we're just going to pick some dates and times and we're going to go whoever can make it. I'd rather have a conversation about that because, um, some of us, if it's in the next couple of days, we want to be present. So maybe Saturday or Sunday might be better for our meeting, um, or something like that. Or we can work something out, but I wouldn't want Ugana or Eric or I not to be able to participate because some hours are chosen that don't work within our work and life schedule, but we definitely want to be there.
Yeah, of course, very comfortable working with board members who work. And I, it's also possible that this is a conversation that can be conducted, uh, virtually. Not virtually as in Zoom, but virtually via some email work as well. And I do want to point out, these, me, these focus groups take place within the scope of one week. So, I, you know, we, we started to think about scale, 25 meetings is a lot of meetings. That's not the work of the small group, right? That they're not doing the meetings, right? That, that's the consultant. But we're talking about the scope of one week to provide feedback, right? And, and, and input, right? Hank, am I reading the schedule right? And then, of course, then you're going to a survey function beyond that after the focus groups are conducted. So it's important to remember within the scope of the timeline of where these things happen as we think about where the public input is being leveraged in those moments and the scale of what can be accomplished within the matter of a single week.
Um, and my last question was around, um, so those meetings are meetings that Hank and your team are conducting, not us. So that's up to you all to figure out that schedule for 25, 30, 35. Second, what lang, or, and finally, sorry, what languages can you do?
Yeah, great question. Uh, so we have capacity to do Spanish. We do not have any other languages that we speak on the team, but we certainly could, uh, could use your translate, your, um, your translators, if that works for the other languages.
Susan, Ugana, and then Becky, I don't know if you had another comment? Okay.
So my comment is what David actually put in his comment about the SIA, you know, using the model that we used when we were doing our, uh, groups as we were compiling the SIA information. So just, just in terms of like, we've, we've done this, I, you know, when I look at these lists, I just want to, and Karen spoke to it already. I just want to make sure that, you know, and I know we will, but just making sure that we are, you know, including in all our partners, you know, the LGBTQ group, you know, so our students will listen to. I just want to make sure that we have a really good comp, you know, group of people that we're reaching out to.
Ugana?
I think some of my questions have been answered already. So, but I'm just wondering about how the meeting is going to look like. Like when you say community partners and community leaders, are you going to, um, have separate meetings with these people? Or are you going to have them all together? Maybe different communities, um, the leaders coming together? Are you going to meet with each of them separately? That's just what I'm wondering. But other than that, most of my questions have already been answered in the course of the conversation.
And I might say, so really, it's up to you as to whether it's, you know, like it's a same group with many voices from a similar group. Or I would say more often than not, community, let's say a community partner group is a diverse group of community partners representing different entities. Or if you have parent advocacy groups, frequently it's one member of each parent advocacy group coming together in a collective. But it doesn't have to be that way. And certainly there are times when it's, it's, it's the other thing that you described, which is a group of, um, whether it's, you know, similar, whatever, um, if you've got an arts group that's very influential, you might want us to meet with that arts group in totality. So we can, we can go either way. The other thing, and I, I'll share a little bit more in detail when we actually have our meeting. But do know that, you know, when you assign a principal to come to a meeting, they're probably going to be there. But when you are trying to get community members, they may or may not be there. And so oftentimes for a community partner group or the mayor's office or, you know, you might have to put out 25 invitations to get six or seven people to a group, right? Because people are super busy and you're giving them maybe two weeks' notice and they may or may not be able to attend or they may or may not have a designee that can come. So sometimes those large numbers actually become more manageable because people simply aren't able to participate in a way that they would like to.
So is this group, um, is this list also, does this encompass some of the boards and commission that we have in the city? Can they participate in this process?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so I want to make sure I summarize where I think we're going with this because lots of pieces to the conversation. We'll have a, a three person group. So Karen, Sunita and Eric. Board members will send them the committees they're interested in. They will compile that. Send that to you, Hank. And then I guess if, if, if you take a look at that, Hank, and you're like, this is more than we can logistically do. Then at that point, let me know and I guess we'll, we'll try and figure something out, but I'm hoping that is not the case. I'm hoping that we'll be able to, to take everything that, that the board members are giving and be able to do that.
I think so. I think so. And I, I think I, I elected Dave to be the recipient of the emails.
Okay, so, so we send them to David and then David sends them to the other three board members or should we do all?
I, I think that the idea, and I'm going to send you all an email right now, reply to that email with your brain dump of groups or individuals you think should be part of these small group focus groups. I will take that and compile a list, then we'll pull together the small team to sort of meet and vet and discuss that list.
So there's an important piece here, which is, I don't know, there, there's a difference between compiling and vetting. And if we're going to give every board member a voice in this, I'm concerned about vetting. Because what I don't want to do is put three board members in the place of having to tell other board members, you can't have that group. That's why, that's why I was thinking the compiling would happen with the board members and then go to Hank. And then if, if we end up with more than we can logistically handle, then at that point, we would have to take a look at that and figure out what to do. But I'm, I'm, part of this is, is I don't want to put my fellow board members in a tough position.
If I may, what, what I think I hear you saying, Tom, which certainly makes it easier is that you're not, you're not limiting yourself to 25. So we're, we're getting away from this, okay, we got to cut somewhere. I don't think we're going to end up with 40 or 50. I think that, um, I mean, I don't know your community, you do. But it seems to me that, given, given the sort of guidance you just gave the board, um, and me and Dave, I think that we can, with just the three board members who are serving on the, on the committee, we can compile without eliminating, and I don't think that needs to go back to the board for vetting. I'm hearing that no one's going to be like crossed off the list. It's just a matter of where to place them. Do they get combined with another group? Do they get mixed here? And that's what you're having your subgroup do.
That sounds great. That makes sense to me. Board members, does anybody have an objection to that process or does that sound good?
Can you repeat that last part, Hank? I don't think I caught what you.
Yeah, that, that the, the work of, of yourself and Eric and Ugana will be, no, uh, Sunita, I apologize. Will be to, more to compile and, and arrange. So you have this beautiful bouquet of flowers and you're figuring out where all the flowers go, but you're not tossing any of the flowers out. They're all going to find somewhere in the vase to go. How was that for a little metaphor?
Yeah, we, we.
You can tell me it was a terrible metaphor.
As a second language learner, I could visualize that. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to summarize. The next steps are David sending an email probably as we speak. Maybe you've already gotten it. Your board members will reply with, I like. Maybe you've already gotten it. Your board members will reply with, I like his terminology, brain dump. Um, Dave's also going to set up a meeting in the coming days with the three board members. Myself, um, himself, Diana, whoever, and we'll we'll sort and arrange this list to come up with whatever the groups are. Okay, great job, board. I'm gonna pull up the planning agenda again. Nope, that's not it. Thank you for your patience with me. Okay, planning agenda, I'm trusting you see that. Uh, okay, the rest of the agenda is going to go I think somewhat more quickly. Some of these, I'm just going to look for nods from board members, and this is the first one is item number six. Uh, we may get internal candidates. And my recommendation to the board, and I would like you to give me a nod of approval, unless you don't, but my recommendation would be that internal candidates follow the very same process as external candidates. That is, they get vetted by the consultants against your ideal profile. If they warrant being asked for a preliminary interview on their own merits, then they will be. If they don't warrant, then they won't be, just as any other candidate. In some parlance, we call that courtesy interviews when internal candidates automatically jump to the interview stage. And we aren't, we aren't fans of courtesy interviews. So um, our recommendation would be that internal candidates who get interviews, it's because they merit the interviews. Um, is there anybody who has a concern around that? Great. Uh, item number seven, actually, we don't need to speak to. It was there because uh, we had a question as to whether the translations would be done in-house or um, whether through a third-party entity, uh, the the online survey to get translated into all your languages. And I was speaking to Mike Schofield, and he thought it would be best if we did that on our end. So um, unless that gives anybody heartache, we'll take care of the translations into your languages. Candidate reimbursement for travel. So at some point in the near future, but not tonight, we will determine, you will determine if candidates will be coming for in-person interviews. It's, we don't need to decide that tonight, and it's probably a little too soon to decide that because the world changes every day anyway. However, in the event uh, that candidates do either in the first round or the second round, come to Beaverton in person, we would like to um, we would like to tell them that the district will be compensating them and reimbursing them for their travel expenses. Uh, that's pretty standard, but I wanna, it's your pocketbook, not mine, so I want to make sure that you are okay with that. Any concerns?
You said that's a standard practice, Hank?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a sense for, over the course of this process, what that might cost? Like an average, or is it different every time?
So the two factors are, one, how far away people are coming, uh, and two, what is the um, well, there's three factors really. How far, obviously, we don't know right now how many are coming from far away. It's very different if they're driving from Salem or flying from Philadelphia, right? Uh, the other pieces would be how much time, like, how much uh, time we give them. I actually would, I don't want to jump too far ahead because I said it's not to be decided yet, but the, there's a lot of, there's a lot of value in the first round interviews being virtual, which um, allows for a more quick turnaround and also costs you zero, so it might very well only be the three finalists, or the two or three finalists. So those are some of the issues. Now, sometimes boards will say, okay, we will comp, we will reimburse up to a maximum dollar figure. You can do that if you want. The problem is, what if, you know, airfares are unpredictable, and what if somebody is is in a, you know, in a small regional airport and it's actually costing them $1,500 to fly to Beaverton? Do you, do you really want me to call them up and say the district's only going to pay you, you know, $1,100 and the other 400? I just, I think for $400, it doesn't, doesn't make the district look as great as the district is, and I want this to be a reflection of this being a really, you know, attractive place to work. So I, we could do that. That would be another option.
Hank, it's not just travel. It could be hotel.
Yeah, for sure.
Talking about, are we talking about mileage if they're coming from Eastern Oregon, or they're coming from Washington or California, or is it just, is it just airfare? And then, like you said, if we want to bring them in for, to meet with a community meeting, or the same's gonna go if we're having to do, uh, boards needing to go check them out if they're out of state, are you going to pay for the board to go travel?
Well, I'm not talking about the board to go travel. If the board wants to do a site visit, that's on the board, right? Uh, but you're absolutely right. It does include hotel. Uh, it's typically one night a hotel. Uh, I don't recommend that you're paying for a spouse, although sometimes districts do that. That would be up to you, but I don't necessarily think that's necessary. But yes, it would be, uh, it would be airfare, hotel, if they need to rent a car because they're flying in, rent a car. If they're driving in from Eastern Washington, then it's mileage. So, yeah, there is, there, I mean, it's not, it's not nothing. Yeah.
And and the standard is with other businesses, if if you go in for an interview, they pay for your, your travel and your hotel stay?
For superintendent searches and certainly for a district the size of Beaverton. So I I only do school districts. I can't tell you what I have, what happens in the rest of the world. But, but for school districts, particularly a district the size of Beaverton, folks would be expecting that the the cost will be fully reimbursed.
Ugana?
My question is, is there any situation where we pay upfront, for example, we pick the hotel and we pay for their flight and and fly them in? Is there any situation like that, or do they have to make the expenses and then we reimburse them?
It's certainly easier if they are doing it themselves. Uh, if that is a sticky point, um, we certainly could do it the other way. Uh, I actually like to be the intermediary of the reimbursement because here's why, is once once they file, or if they send documents to the school district, then that becomes public record. I'm not afraid of people knowing how much it costs, but if you have a confidential search, I don't really want the name to get out there in advance, if that makes sense.
So is there, sorry, sorry, is there a standard? For example, what if they are flying, do we pay business class, first class, or what is the standard? So what if they are flying first class or business class, and then we have to reimburse them? How does that work?
I have, so I will tell you, I have, in all my years of doing this, the, there's only one time where I felt a candidate uh, took advantage of a situation, and it was not a first-class ticket. I can't imagine a candidate doing that. I once had a candidate stay at the most expensive, one of the most expensive hotels in Portland at like 375 bucks a night, and I was aghast. And I told that candidate, uh, we're not reimbursing that. Um, and we didn't. I just made that because I just thought that was totally inappropriate. Although these days, I don't know. I mean, things are so expensive sometimes, but in those days, you could have gotten a much better hotel room that, you know, a much less expensive decent hotel room. I I don't, that's not, I I've never had anybody fly business class, and I certainly am not shy. If you would like me to make sure that I tell candidates that they have to fly coach, and if you want me to uh, pick a level of hotels, I certainly can do that. I don't want to, I don't want to give them the wrong impression about the district, that's all in doing so. But I will take, I will, whatever you want me to tell them, I will. That, if you want me to limit it somehow, uh, we can do that.
Hank, it strikes me, the big limiting factor isn't the hotel room or the quality of the flight, but it's whether we do it for both rounds or just one round, right? And it seems like what you're saying is unless COVID just disappears, we're likely to be in the first round doing virtual interviews. So it means to me that that the the expense will be pretty low because it'll, it might just be three people at the end in that second round. I mean, yeah, I know we can't, that we don't have a crystal ball, but I'm just game planning a little bit. Does that make sense?
I know that Mike put in money for superintendent search, and I thought it was more like for the consulting fees and that kind of thing. I'd just be curious how much Mike maybe put in for for these kind of costs. Budget-wise.
So let's, since there seems to be some consternation about this, let's uh, let's come back to this on our November, let's add this to our November 29th uh, agenda, and that would give you some time to think about this. And then you can also ask Mike in the meantime, what what kind of budget items in there. As long as we have this before the recruiting window, I don't think we have to decide this tonight.
Hank, could we task you with working with Mike to do a proposal for this that extends, you know, goodwill to the candidates, but maybe put some guardrails around it?
Sure. You want me to reach, work with Mike on figuring out what that looks like?
Yeah.
I can do that.
And board members that might address the concerns I heard in the questions?
I'm okay with that. It's it's very standard for, you know, and people who come for interviews that we pay for the expenses. And um, as long as it's fine with others. You know, it looks like the first round is going to be virtual anyway, and we're going to have maybe three candidates who might just fly up here, which is, should be okay.
I just want to interject. I don't know why it's an issue, why we wouldn't just as, you know, assuming that no one's going to go first class and assuming that no one's going to go $500 a night. I actually don't, I mean, I'll go ahead and put parameters around it, but I I think it's pretty much the norm to pay for travel and hotels for the second round, not the first. If I'm the only one that has any kind of question about it, I I I don't, we've got enough on the plate everywhere. Uh, you know, I don't want Hank or Mike or anybody else to have, if I'm the only one that has any kind of question and that that this is the standard fare and we're good with um, hotel and airfare, however many candidates it is, then I, you know, I retract um, because I don't want to make this any more difficult than it needs to be.
Do, I guess then the question is, do any board members have concerns and want Hank to put some guardrails around this? Are we okay just saying we're gonna do it without an ex, sort of, some sort of explicit guardrails in writing?
It makes sense to have some guardrails, like, you know, they just put it out there. I mean, we want them to feel welcomed, right? Because we're bringing them in. So like, you know, I don't know. I don't know how you word it, like, not first class and not like five-star, you know, I don't know, there's some cheap five-star hotels too, like, I don't know, like, but within reason, I I think I trust Frank or Frank Hank in putting some basic guardrails. Um, but.
Yeah, I I don't think, I was gonna, sorry, I was gonna pick of that because without those, without guidelines around that, um, we are in other words, saying that we're willing to pay any expense that they they uh, utilize. If they go ahead and use, um, there are people who don't really who don't really know, they could end up racking up bills on our heads, and we're going to pay that. That's what we're saying. If we don't have put any guardrails, we're saying whatever expense you make, we're going to pay. So um, it would be wrong of us to say we're not reimbursing you, they they spent $500 for a night, or they spent uh, a thousand, more than a thousand bucks on etiquette. We're going to have to pay, it would be unfair for us not to pay if we don't put any, you know, limitations on those, on that. So that's what I think.
Let's stick to the plan of having Hank work with Mike to put some common sense guardrails on there and bring that back to us.
That's great. Thank you, board. Uh, let's talk about um, publicity issues. So publicity issues is around, um, so we basically two different kinds of searches in Oregon with respect to superintendent search and publicity. I would say roughly 60%, I'm going to say 60 to 70% of the time that a superintendent, a district engages in a superintendent search, there is a point in the process around the final interviews where the uh, district announces the names of the finalists publicly. And around 30 to 40% of the time, the districts do not uh, announce the names publicly. There are pros and cons to both. I'm gonna, and that might seem obvious, and I'm going to just be really, really concise on it. We can certainly talk about this a bit more. The advantage to um, announcing the finalists publicly is that sometimes community members think that that's either the law or think that have this expectation because they've opened the newspaper before or read online that the district down the road had a superintendent search, and here are the three finalists, and whatever, it's a public thing. And sometimes that's, sometimes that's very compelling to the board that they want to make sure that the community gets to know who the finalists are, or maybe even can weigh in. The significant disadvantage to that is that um, that is not an easy thing for a candidate, particularly a sitting superintendent to go through. So if you're a, particularly if you're a superintendent already, uh, with a good relationship to your community and a good relationship to your board, you might very well not be interested in throwing your name into a hat publicly for superintendent search that you have no guarantee you're going to get. Um, right? The community is going to feel a little bit differently about you if they know that you're applying to be the superintendent of Beaverton, and then you don't get that job in Beaverton, and you come back home to the district, the the relationship is impacted by that. In some states, and we don't live in one, but in some states, there's, there's a a legal requirement that every application is a public record. Uh, I know that's true in a couple of states. That is not the case in the Northwest, and it's certainly not the case in Oregon. So when we did the search the last time, uh, where you selected Don, it was not a publicized search. Uh, there were community members who were involved in the selection and in a, in a very confidential way, but there was no time that people opened up the Oregonian and read who are the two or three finalists for the Beaverton School District. It just, it didn't happen. Uh, same in the search that we did for Portland Public Schools. So this is something that the board needs to consider and think about, uh, in terms of what direction you want to go. Uh, I'll pause.
I saw, board members, any comments? Susan?
I'm pretty sure that Don would not have gone for, if it were open, I'm not sure he would have gone for the position. In fact, I'm pretty sure that's the case.
I had the opportunity to talk to a board member um, in a, who are former board members, I should say, in a very large district who'd been through one of these searches, um, and the wisdom, community groups, make sure that you've got everybody involved in forming that profile. But then, when you get to this part, it's important that you keep it closed, but that when you come out with your final person, that that, that that person, their qualities as a superintendent are very closely hewed to what the community asks for, and that the community is putting their trust in the board to make that translation happen. Um, so in thinking about that wisdom, I I'm comfortable with a closed process because I want to make sure that we have as many people as possible. Um, and ultimately, I feel like my job as a board member is to take that input from the community and make sure that that goes into the output, the final candidate that we select. Irregardless of whether it's public or whether it's private, we have to do that, but knowing that makes me think that we may actually have a better shot of fulfilling what our community wants, having it private, because there may be candidates, excellent candidates who wouldn't come forward otherwise. Is, let me ask it this way, does anybody uncomfortable if we had a closed process? Okay, I I think that answers your question, Hank.
Great. Okay, thank you, board. Uh, the salary management superintendent, we, I think we talked about before, so just to summarize, I'm going to pull some data together. I will have that for you uh, in advance of your November 29th meeting for you to look at. And at our November, did we, did we decide it was a November 29th meeting? Is that when we're going to do that?
I should already put it on the calendar.
Okay, it's on the calendar, so I I think, I think I had offered that it could be at any board meeting you have, but it, but it needs to be by November 29th, so should we just put it on the 29th since? That's
That sounds good. Hank, what I'm looking for at the end of this meeting is a comprehensive list of dates and things you need from us. And then I'm going to work with Diana to make sure that we poll the board members so that everybody's schedule is taken into account, and we get that all nailed down for you. And if you have hard dates and timelines like this,
Yep.
just send it to me, and we'll make sure that we hit those dates and timelines.
Okay, perfect, perfect. So we'll do that, and you'll discuss this salary range, and you won't take action, but you'll each talk about where your comfort zone is around that. Let's talk about advertising. I'll need some guidance from you. Tonight would be great if you can give me guidance. So in terms of advertising the search, there are some local places that are free. So that's good. The COSA is the go-to place in Oregon for administrators or superintendent searches, no cost to advertise there. Washington State has a similar one, which at least as of a month ago was still free for out of state. So those are, so regionally, there's really not a cost in terms of putting the jobs up in the right places. Here's where you might want to spend some money. There are basically two national publications where people go to, to look for superintendent searches. One is AASA and the other is Education Week. I think they're fairly duplicative. I, I think if they're, I think you only have to post it in one. I don't think you have to post it in two. And they run somewhere around $800. Uh, I think that's a wise investment to spend that to get it really out there in all parts of the country. The other places where I think you might consider would be there, you might be familiar with ALAS, the Association of Latino Administrators and AWALA, which is the Oregon affiliate. And Oregon's affiliate is really one of the strongest affiliates in the, in the country. And NASB is the National Alliance of Black National, it's a black admin, NASB, National Alliance of Black Educators. Why am I not thinking of what the S stands for? Nonetheless, uh, so that is another, uh, great opportunity to reach, um, candidates of color. And I also think it says something about your district when you're advertising, um, in those publications. Between AWALA and ALAS and NASB, uh, if you were to advertise in all of them, it's around 500 bucks. So, um, so a national plus, plus, um, those three sites and you might want to advertise on the, the California board also. I have kind of mixed feelings about whether that one is worth it or not. Uh, it's kind of a clunky board, but it is the go-to board for California leaders. You certainly aren't going to, aren't going to, uh, spend more than two grand at the most and you could probably keep it under 1500. Or I am assuming you want a national search. I mean, you could say, no, we don't need to do any of the advertisements, but I do think, I do think some of those would be viable. So if, I guess I'll pause and tell me, tell me what you want me to spend money on and what's important to you.
Susan?
I'm not adverse to the advertising, but it kind of goes back to the conversation about the cost of hotels and everything. It'd be nice to know if there already is money set aside in our budget for the superintendent for these, you know, these, for these costs, or if we need to add to the budget. So it kind of goes back to, I mean, I realize, you know, when you look at the, our school district budget, it's a pittance, but it still would be nice to know what's budgeted and not budgeted.
Hank, is this another thing you could work on with Mike? I mean, my value is for making sure we have national reach. That's really important to me. But I think Susan's bringing a great point, you know, do we have money budgeted for that? And how do we ensure that we both work the budget end of it and the national reach end of it?
I could do that.
And, and Tom, that's not to say to, not to move money into that budget. It's just to make sure that, that, that we don't go over budget because there's no money in there.
Good point.
Yeah, I can totally do it. And sometimes there's, you know, there's HR advertising money that is available to be used for superintendent search too. So I'm certainly happy to work with Mike on that. Are there any, sorry, Tom?
Oh, I was just going to ask if there are other comments?
Yep.
Okay. You're working with Mike. We got, we got some.
Uh, residency expectations. So, um, the question there is must the new superintendent live within the boundaries of the Beaverton School District? Once upon a time, that was kind of the yes, of course. These days, I see a lot more flexibility on that, but some districts are very determined that they must live in the district. The question isn't so much if you, if you hire somebody from across the country and they move to take the Beaverton superintendency, uh, clearly they should be living in Beaverton. The question really more arises if somebody lives somewhere else in Northwestern Oregon. Maybe has a home, maybe has kids who go to school in that school district or has some reason for, you know, maybe they live five miles outside of the Beaverton School District boundary. So that's what I would ask you to think about. Is it, is it a absolute that they, that this person must commit to living in Beaverton? Or, um, do they just need to live close enough to Beaverton to be able to be there for all the hours that you expect your superintendent to be present? Uh, I'm curious if, you know, where you land on that.
Karen?
Um, if we're trying to attract, um, like a diverse pool, knowing that the, the, if a person has children, and I would say, and with all the pushback that happens within a school district, I would be okay with that person living, having lived within the area. I mean, like obviously not really far because they're going to be here all the time, but having their children in a different school district just for safety or just for their, you know, I don't know, however, even though we know we want our, our person to love Beaverton, but and I'll speak for myself as a brown skin immigrant by POC administrator. I have worried about the safety of my own children sometimes when I was in leadership positions. And so I would be okay, I just want to name it that for the safety of their own children because of, you know, just political situations or whatever. I'm okay as a parent thinking that they would have their children in a neighboring school district or so that meaning that they would have to live outside of our school district, but I would want them to be close enough so that they can get here for all the meetings, obviously, and all that. But I just wanted to put that out there.
Other comments from the board? So if we were to talk about that proximity, I mean, one thing that I've seen before is, this isn't, I don't know if this applies to superintendents, but you know, can make it to central office within an hour if called or something like that, right? Like, that's actually something I've seen for like mill rights and people who work on, on heavy equipment that they could break, right? Is you want to have them living in a proximity. Is that the way you describe it with a superintendent? How do you describe that proximity?
Is that a question for me, Tom?
Yeah, yeah. I'm trying to understand if we're going to say neighboring school district, what does that mean? Right? Right? Cause like, we, we kind of have a general sense to, to, to the point that Karen made, but like, how do we describe that when we're talking about this posting?
Uh, I mean, you could say that, you could say they, the district would like you to be in Beaverton, but certainly no farther away, no farther than one hour away from the district office. I mean, that's, that's a talking point. So that tells a candidate, there's a little bit of wiggle room. And, uh, you know, if I live in, you know, Woodburn, I don't know. Am I an hour? Am I an hour and five minutes? I mean, I don't know, but that's at least the talking points. How long is Woodburn for? Can you make Woodburn to Beaverton an hour? No, you can't.
Traffic.
Like he says, so, um, you know, sometimes, sometimes districts say, sometimes districts say, we really, really want them to be in Beaverton. If they're not in Beaverton, we want them really, really close to Beaverton without a exact metric. Sometimes just to say, I'm sorry, they have to be in Beaverton. And sometimes they say, we don't care where you live. We just want to make sure you do this job and it's going to be hard. So plan accordingly.
Ugana and then Becky?
Um, I, I feel like that it's going to limit the extent of our search. If we're going to put, um, they have to live within the boundaries or close neighborhoods to Beaverton. Does that exclude candidates from other parts of the country? I thought the extent, the reason for this, part of the reason we're doing this is that we can, you know, have a more diverse pool of candidates. And if we put, if we limit it to candidates that live close by, we may not have access to that diverse pool that we're really looking for. So that's just my take. Are we saying that, okay, we hire, you're going to leave? Is this after we hired the person or this is what we're looking for? We're looking for candidates that live in Beaverton or close to Beaverton?
This is after you hire the person. This is after you hire the person.
Okay. After we hired you, it doesn't matter where they're living in the country, but they are willing, they have to be willing to live in Beaverton or close to Beaverton. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay, okay, okay.
Becky?
I, I definitely don't think it has to be a requirement that they live in Beaverton. We've had, we, we've had Jeff Rose who came from Canby. He stayed in Canby, you know, for, for whatever reason. And on any given day with the traffic, Canby can take over an hour. We've had people, we have employees from Salem. We had an interim that came from Newburgh. I think most folks, even with Don, he commuted for the first, you know, months before he found a house. And we kept saying to him, you don't have to, well, he wanted to move here just for his own commute purposes, just for his. So I think most people for their own sake are going to gravitate. But if their kids are in another district or if their spouse has a job that, that they need, I mean, I, I just don't think it's in this day and age that it's a requirement that they have to live or even, even to, even to say it has to be in the tri-county area. It could be Yam Hill, it could be Vancouver, Washington. I mean, I, I just don't think we need to have that requirement.
Susan, it looked like you might want to make a comment or no, you just. So I guess the question then is, it sounds like the board's okay with somebody living outside of the district. The only question is, is do we describe that or we just leave it totally open? And I guess it sounds like folks want it totally open. Is, is there agreement that folks want it totally open? They're just nodding heads if people feel that way?
I personally think that we should, uh, put some guidelines around that, determine what, how many kilometers away the person can leave. That's just my personal opinion because we, we leave it open. A candidate can live in Seaside and be a superintendent in Beaverton. And I don't know how that would work proximity wise. While I'm not against them living outside of Beaverton. However, if we don't put any limitations around that, we might have candidates living in Newburgh or, you know, Astoria, Salem even, and be a superintendent in Beaverton. While I am not very experienced in school broad and, uh, you know, the, the specifics of the duties of the superintendent. I still know that it would be nice to have a superintendent that lives, you know, a little close to the school that, that they have worked itself. That's just my thoughts. So I think that there should be some kind of limitations around how far away the superintendent should leave from Beaverton. I'm not saying they must live in Beaverton, but you know, we can decide how far that they can leave. That's just my thoughts. Thank you.
Sunita, you have a comment?
Yeah. My initial preference would be that a person lives here in Beaverton so that they are close. And they know firsthand, you know, what's going on, but I'm also, I understand what Karen was saying. So, I mean, close enough, you know? So some guidelines is good. Preferences if they are in Beaverton, like that they can come as soon as possible if there is a need. But a little bit of guidelines, maybe a mileage, you know, like they need to be within certain miles of Beaverton or, you know? I think that would be better as far as I'm concerned.
Hank, I keep doing this to you, but I'm wondering if maybe you come back to the board with a proposal for what that language could look like. So if the board wants some sort of guidelines around it, taking a look at maybe some of the other contracts or things that are out there. What are best practices if that's done to make sure that it's not too close, that it really makes it too hard? But it's not so far away that we've got somebody who's coming five hours down the road and can't come to the district if we need them. And, and if you could maybe bring something in that would give us a chance to process the language ahead of the board meeting and, and think about it.
So I, I can do that. I just want to say that this is, this is really not contract language so much as guidance to a candidate. So once the contract is signed, unless you are going to say the candidate must live in Beaverton, in which case you should put that into the contract. Uh, I don't think you're going to see contracts that say the, you know, that have more, that are more nuanced. So I think it's really about talking points. I mean, I can, I can do that, but I could probably do it just as well right now, which is, I'm hearing some divergence between it doesn't really matter, or it does matter, they have to be close enough. And I think, I think, you know, either one of those, okay. Uh, I don't know that I have anything more specific to say, but if I, I would ask the board to, um, you know, maybe we just take another couple of minutes on this. If we think about timeframe, what's, what's appropriate? If we think about the district office, what's appropriate? Is one hour, is that comfortable? Is 30 minutes comfortable?
So I'm going to throw a proposal out there. I would say must be able to reach district offices within a reasonable period of time. And, and I would not put actually a mileage or an hour or something like that. But reasonable is also like, you know, if somebody's not able to get in there repeatedly, you've got a problem. And then the board has some teeth that they could use later to come back and say, hey, you're not being able to reach these locations in a reasonable amount of time. We need to talk about that. That was in the posting. So it gives us the ability to do something without restricting it. Because like part of it is traffic patterns change. Figuring out that other piece. I mean, I, I do it with the workers I represent all the time and it is actually very, very difficult.
By the way, I mean, in my opinion, it meant a lot to me that, you know, um, Don moved into our area up in West Sylvan, you know, the area up there. Versus like Jeff Rose being more of a carpetbagger and then leaving for another job. So I really hope we, you know, find somebody that wants to stay 10 years and get involved with the community. Is around all the time. I go to Bleachers, I go to bar, I see Don. I mean, I like it. I like somebody to be involved with the community. Maybe we don't make it a restriction, but I mean, it means a lot to me. So.
Board, are we okay with that? That, we'll call it the reasonable language. Would that work for everybody? Or does anybody object to it? Let me put that forward. Okay. Let's, I think we've basically got consensus there.
Yeah. I mean, that, that gives me talking points, which is really what I'm, I'm looking for at this juncture. Yeah. Okay. Uh, the background check, I just want to sort of talk through the background check and I'll do it really, really briefly. So you will want to engage in background checks, uh, certainly of the person that you hire. And so we use a third party entity that's a true investigative entity. As recently as five years ago, I would say most of the time we would, the board would, um, conduct a background check only on the finalist. And that's always a little bit of risk, right? Cause once you've selected your finalist and you do a background check, it's a, you keep your fingers crossed and hope that it all turns out fine. And so more and more districts are doing background checks on all finalists. You don't have to decide this right now. Um, the background checks are, uh, I mean, they're not cheap. They're 1,800 bucks per, per background check. So, um, there is a cost to it and you know, and again, we don't have to figure this out right now. You might want to see where we land in terms of the first round interviews and so forth. But I do want to know, you to know that's out there. Um, so that is a cost that you'll face at some point. And it could be just one that you do, or you could do a couple of them. So just, just know that as you're sort of factoring into what some of the associated costs would be. Those are the, my agenda items and I, the last one is for you. Is there anything else we should talk about? Anything else I should know? Anything else you wished we had covered, but we didn't?
Board members, other comments?
I was just thinking about, um, added cost and I remember in the contract stuff, I think if you were to do the translation of the surveys, then there was an added cost to us. Is that still true?
Yeah. So, um, that cost is, uh, six 25 per language. And, uh, Mike thought that was a good value. So we have moved ahead with that. If that's not okay, please tell me tonight and I'll put the kibosh on that.
I think it's good. I just wanted to state it because that's, we were talking about added costs. And I think if we added a group, um, to the 25, I think it was like 250 or something. I can't remember. I think there was an added cost to that too. So just naming the added cost so that we're, we're in the know and thinking ahead about that.
Yeah. And the cost is actually half that for an additional focus group is actually only 125 for an additional focus group.
I didn't mean 250.
All right. Well, uh, thank you, Hank. We appreciate you guiding us through this process. We're excited to get going. We'll work to get some dates on the calendar. I'm excited for the work of Sunita and Eric and Karen. And, um, to see what our committees look like. That's going to be really amazing to see what our outreach is like and we will go from there. we will go from there. So with that, if there aren't any further comments, we'll join our, our work session tonight.
Great. Thank you, board. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to working with you.